And good evening to everyone, welcome to tonight's City of Homewood Council meeting of October 8th, 2018. We're gonna begin tonight with a couple of items before we call everything to order. First, we have a couple of presentation and special guests, and it's my honor to welcome our first guest, Judge Bob Vance, and Judge, you have the floor. Welcome.
It's good to be with you all tonight, I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you. I'd like to start by mentioning a little tale that occurred the evening before the presidential election in 2016. So this was the Monday night before the presidential election, and I had the honor of swearing in the new mayor and city council in Trussville on that night. And of course, with the presidential election the next day, everyone was on edge, and as you can recall, that was a pretty emotional time. And when given the chance to speak, I emphasize the point that while all our attention and focus is on what's happening in Washington and what we see on the television, really, government affects us most clearly when we've got that pothole in the road that needs to be filled. And the garbage needs to be picked up, and when you call for protection or fire service, they're there responding. That's just to say, local government is the government that's closest to us, and really has the greatest impact in our lives. And I think my words were well received then, but they're so true. And so, that's all just to say that I'm very appreciative of what you do. As a circuit judge for 16 years, of course, I've had the opportunity to deal with situations involving municipal government. I understand that it's a tough job sometimes, it's a complicated job, sometimes a thankless job, but I do appreciate the work that you all do, and from all accounts, from what I hear and what I see, the City of Homewood is firing on all eight cylinders, so you're to be commended by the good work that you're doing. I'm trying to convey that spirit of coming together and dealing with the real problems in the course of my campaign for Chief Justice, and those of you who know me know that as a judge, I really try to focus on the problems at hand without politics, without the divisiveness, the ugliness, it's just a matter of getting down to business and trying to deal with the problems that are confronting us in the courts. And that's what I think we do need in our courts, both locally and at the Supreme Court, and that's why I'm running for Chief Justice, to try to push out politics and just focus on fairness. It's a pretty straightforward, pretty open message that I'm trying to convey, and I think it's very much along the lines of what you, in dealing with municipal government, deal with in a very straightforward, matter-of-fact way. Identify the problems, deal with the problems, period. So, I appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight, and I appreciate the chance to meet with you and all, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you for the hard work that you all do. So, thank you so much for this opportunity, Mayor, City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Vance.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here.
My pleasure.
We also have a second presentation from our own Lieutenant Brandon Broadhead of the Fire Department. Lieutenant?
Thank you, thank you. My name's Brandon Broadhead, I'm the president of our local Homewood Firefighter Association. I'm also a lieutenant here with Homewood Fire Department. Kind of what I want to speak to you about today, two years ago when I took over the presidency, one of my missions was to make our association a better steward of the community. You know, the community gives us what we have, and it's our job to return that. So, we found an E-board, then they take that mission seriously. So, one of the things they wanted to do this year is we are gonna participate in the October Breast Cancer Awareness. We have purchased shirts that we will be selling throughout the month of October, and then again next year. We went in with a shirt that wasn't marked for a year, so we can kind of brand it and keep it our own. One of the big things, and you'll find one in front of you, and I know a lot of people have already looked at the size and said, "That's not mine." I included my card there, it's got my email, my phone number, cellphone, shoot me a text or an email, and I'll change it out for you in a heartbeat. We are selling these shirts for $15 apiece. Every bit of the money that we raise will go straight to a local research foundation. We've already reached out to some community partners to decide who we're gonna go with. We want to make sure that that money is actually all the way down to the people that need it, not used in the top echelon of the company. So, we'll have them on sale throughout the month, each of you have one. We would love your support to show them out, help them get in the schools, you'll see us a lot more out in the community over the next couple of months with these T-shirts. If it's not the right size, shoot me a text or an email, and I'll make sure we correct that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant, and stay nearby here. All right, with that, we're gonna go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order, October 8th, 2018, and we're gonna begin with an invocation from Lieutenant Brandon Broadhead of the Fire Department.
I'm a little short. All right, please bow your heads as we pray. Dear Heavenly Father, first, let me say thank you. Thank you on behalf of everyone gathered here today. Thank you for the life that you have given us. Thank you for the opportunity to assemble with the leaders of our city and to do your will. Thank you for the abundance of blessings you have given the City of Homewood and its citizens. Dear Lord, I pray that you will continue to guide and bless the leaders of our city as they carry out the most difficult task. I pray for you to continue to bless each of the people in our city, and I ask that you help bring awareness to the breast cancer that we are trying to promote this month. We need a cure, and it's through you that you can lead us to this cure. I pray that you provide comfort and healing as you lead us to that cure. We are forever thankful for what you have done for us, it is in your name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Raise the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you again, Lieutenant. We'll begin tonight with a roll call. Robert?
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney? Mr. Thames?
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Here.
Mr. Wolverton?
Here.
Mr. McCluskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt? Mrs. Andrus?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
And I will obviously be sitting in for President Limbaugh tonight, and we do have a quorum. All right, I'll begin first. Entertained a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes from our September 10th, 2018 meeting.
So moved.
By Mrs. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Thames. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, minutes of...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have that marked as an abstention.
On the minutes, okay.
And as I told our clerk, this was not a reflection, because I just didn't have enough time to read it today, so I've held it. Discretion is better part of balance.
Not a problem, thank you, sir. All right, I'm gonna skip on down to board vacancies, and I understand we do have a Ward One opening for BZA, is that right, Brett, do you?
I don't think we've opened that for interviews yet.
Is that something we need to open, Robert?
This one needs to be opened.
Okay, gotcha, I'm sorry, misunderstood. Okay, so we're gonna open that. What, for, we're gonna open it for 30 days?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Robert?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, Ward One BZA opening, we're gonna open today and close...
On November 5th, that's almost 30 days.
Okay, November 5th?
Yes, sir.
All right. Are there any other open or closed dates we have?
Robert, do you know...
Ms. Andrus?
Oh, sorry, thank you, I'm sorry, Mr. President, for ten. Robert, do you know if we have closed now the library board position for Ward Five?
Yes, it was closed, well, I'm sorry, library board for five, yes, it was closed on August 27th.
Okay, I thought so, the last meeting, I thought it was closed. Okay, so we do have someone that we want to recommend for that, and that's Carla Dumontier, so...
All right, any questions? So we have a motion for approval of a new Ward Five representative to the library board.
I would second.
Second by Mrs. Smith, I was looking at her, so she gets the nod. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so welcome, and Robert, if you can, or let them officially know...
Mr. Gualtney, I know has been in contact with her, but do you have her contact information?
No, what was his name?
Carla Dumontier.
Okay, I will check on that.
Okay.
I'm sure we do in there.
I can email Mr. Gualtney too, if I need to.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other board vacancies or appointments? All right, so we'll go to, got some amendments to the agenda tonight, so let me go through these. First of all, for, just like, we're gonna have three to add to committee referral, 07-10-18, which is gonna be a request to add streetlights to Old Oxmore Road from 501 to 615 Oxmore Road, that coming to us from Walter Jones, and it'll be going to, it looks like we're gonna go send it to two committees, Public Safety first, and then the Finance Committees for potential funding. Then we're gonna have 09-10-18, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Neopost for processing system, printing, folding, and mailing, coming from Robert Burgett, Finance Director, and that's gonna go to our Finance Committee. And then lastly, to the Committee Referral, we have 10-10-18, which is gonna be some changes to our zoning ordinance, coming to us from Brett Thames, and that will be assigned to Planning and Development. Then we're also gonna have two other items adding to our new business agenda. We're gonna have first, 8-10-18, which is a request for consideration of an ABC Restaurant Retail Liquor License for Margaronas Cantina LLC, doing business as Margaronas Cantina, located at 230 State Farm Parkway, coming to us from Robert Burgett, our clerk, and one other item to add to new business is 11-10-18, which is regarding a Magic City Connector Route proposal to be discussed later tonight in our new business agenda. All right, with that, we'll entertain a motion to approve the amendments to the tonight's agenda. By Mr. McCluskey. Second by Mrs. Smith. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, the agenda, minute agenda is approved. We'll get into consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda from Mr. Jones, second by Mr. McCluskey. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a quick comment on this before we vote on it, concerning the tree and landscaping ordinance, because I did have a couple of different people reach out to me who had read our agenda. I wanted to make clear that the reason that this was dropped in committee is it has been sent to the Planning Commission for their review, and there were just some concerned residents who did not understand why it was being dropped, and were afraid that that meant we were not discussing it anymore, and I said, "No, we've moved it on to the next phase." So, just to make that clear for anyone who may be watching on YouTube, that that is why, that is why it is on here tonight.
The masses out there, okay.
The masses, the dozens and dozens of people.
All right, fair enough. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, the consent agenda is approved. All right, moving into old business agenda, first item, 18-08-18, which is a request for consideration to contract for a citywide traffic study, coming to us from Andy Gualtney and Brett Thames.
I think we need to carry this over, speaking with Mr. Bischoff, there needs to be a change.
Okay. All right, without objection, we'll carry over 18-08-18. Move on to the next item, which we, 27-08-18, which is a request for consideration to authorize the mayor to execute the property sale adjacent to 431 Greensprings Highway, coming to us from Mayor McBrayer. I don't know if there's any further discussion on this.
The Finance Committee recommended that we not take any action.
So, from the floor, I would maybe drop a second at this point.
All right, so we have a, from the floor, we have a motion for Mr. Jones to drop 27-08-18, and a second by Mr. McCluskey. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, 27-08-18 is dropped from the floor. Next item, 14-09-18, public hearing tonight for consideration of a variance to the signed ordinance at 1 West Lakewood Drive, coming to us from David Branton and Greg Cobb, and I don't know if we have anyone here, I'm gonna go ahead and open, well, Greg, I don't know if you want to come, well, I'll tell you, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing, and Greg, I'll let you go ahead and set the stage for us, and then we'll get comments in favor, and make sure if anyone's here to speak to it, either way. Thank you.
Yes, sir. This is a request for an additional sign on the building. There's more than one tenant in this building, our ordinance only allows for one sign per building, so that's what the request is, is for additional sign, and do you have the square footage on it, David?
It's just under 40.
Okay. So it'll fit within our size requirement, the change would be additional sign.
Okay. I don't know if anybody has any, before we get to questions, anything further in support? Okay. Anyone else here to speak in favor or against this item? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. All right, Mr. Jones, recognize you for comments.
Could we get the pictures?
Yeah. Typically, we would, we can show them to everybody, so...
Yeah, if we have, I was kinda waiting for those, Brian must not have those to pop them up.
I'll go get this one, Brian.
Okay. We heard you. Duly noted, sir.
Does anyone else care for a look at the sign?
I had it last time, but I would like to see it again.
So, where are the signs, where's the second sign going?
The additional sign, let me get the...
Okay.
It's hard to see.
The additional sign would go, would be facing Lake Shore. This building has a number of tenants in it, and this proposed sign is for one of the existing tenants already in the building. This sign is, it's within the guidelines in terms of the size of it, it's actually a non-lit sign, like all, like so many of the other ones on the building, it's just that they never had a building sign for themselves as a tenant, and so this would be the last guy to get a sign on the building.
And didn't you tell us in the committee meeting that they are the, they're the last tenant in the building that doesn't have a sign, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's right.
Yeah. Everybody else already has, everybody who else is, who's in the building already has a sign on the building.
Yeah, everyone I know in that building has a sign already.
Has a sign.
Yes, ma'am.
And just to make sure we are clear, the ones that do have the sign on the building were all approved when this was in Jefferson County.
Right.
Not in Homewood.
I think that's right. I don't think senior care...
When it was annexed. The last one, one did come up there for us, one on either end.
Okay.
They came before us, I don't remember the name of that company, but one of them did come before us.
They come before us after the annexation?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think the St. Vincent sign was already up there, had been approved prior.
Yeah, that's old, that's been there for a while.
Yeah, it's been there for a while.
There it is.
There's a picture of it up there.
It's a set of letters that are, it's just aluminum painted white, they do not light up at night, in keeping with the construction of other signs on the building.
It's hard to see on that picture. That's the existing, that's what it's gonna look like.
All right, any further questions?
I'd make a motion to approve. Oh, he closed it.
No, we've been doing questions, I probably should have kept it open, but nonetheless. We got our, any other questions, questions answered? All right, public hearing has been closed, so we'll entertain a motion from Mrs. Smith. Thank you. Second by Mr. Wolverton. Any further questions, discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, it's two nays, and one, two, three, four, five, six ayes. So, passes six to two. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Mr. Thames and Mr. Higginbotham. And that's gonna be a resolution?
18-148.
18-148, got it. Okay, next item, 15-09-18, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a variance to a signed ordinance at 201 Vulcan Road, coming to us from Robert Norris and Greg Cobb. Mike, I understand we can set this public hearing as early as October 22nd?
I think he asked you to carry it over.
He did. In committee, he asked, he asked us to carry over, they were going back to their signed company, because we, he did not realize that they could not have a pole sign, so he does not need to have the public hearing set right now.
All right, so we're gonna just carry over without objection, 15-09-18. Which gets us to our next item, excuse me, 19-09-18, public hearing tonight for consideration of declaring the property located at 307 West Glenwood Drive a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinance 1098 Litter, and ordinance 1310 Open and Unenclosed Storage, and ordinance 1750 and 1910 Excessive Growth. This is coming to us from Mr. Cook, and Mr. Cook, I'll let you begin first before we open the public hearing.
Okay. The property is assessed to the name of Melissa Peters, same address, 307 West Glenwood Drive. Notices were sent out, giving proper time to abate the issue, the property was posted, that letter came back undelivered. Then the public hearing was set, another letter went out, and the property was posted again. I have not gotten response back on that letter, whether it was delivered or not. The house is furnished, but appears to be vacant, had some complaints over the past several months from the neighbors. As you can see from the pictures, someone is maintaining the front yard, I don't know if it's the homeowner or neighbors. The backyard is just totally grown up, from the back of the house to the back of the property.
Has there been any communication with any party?
None whatsoever.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Are those notices on the property still there?
They are. They are. I went by there today. There's two big yellow signs there.
All right, Mr. Jones?
And I'm the one that put this on the agenda. The calls that I've been getting have been related to, I mean, people have been good neighbors within that street to go and mow it because it looked so bad.
That's what I suspected.
And that, it's almost, it's almost like a double-edged sword, you really shouldn't do that, but they, they didn't know what else to do.
Sure.
But it's been, it's been like this for, what, 10 years, or, I mean, a very long time.
Well, there's some neighbors here, too.
Yeah, so, lots of, yeah, I mean, you know, many complaints for that.
All right, without, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing first, to make sure, have anyone else here to speak. I'm gonna open tonight's public hearing on this item. Anyone here to speak in favor or against this? Come forward, and please let Robert sign your name in with Robert.
My name is Brian Jarman, I live at 305 West Glenwood Drive, I'm house directly to the north of this property. Lived there for four years, and this has been an ongoing problem. There are, in the public nuisance category, the excessive growth, which you've obviously seen from the photographs, I deal with that myself by walking the fence line about once a month with Roundup, and just spraying over the fence and killing everything I can, because if I don't, the, excuse me, the wisteria will grow 18 inches a day, and it'll be all in my yard, so I just have to do that. The bug issue...
Can I ask you, how long you been having to do that?
Since the day I moved in.
Four years.
Oh, for all four years?
Oh, sure, no, actually, when I first moved in, I got her number, Melissa's number from one of the other neighbors, and tried to contact her, and then never got a response. So I just basically clear-cut about four feet of land on the fence line, all the way to the back, just to make a starting point. Anyway, the bug situation is pretty horrific, and we use professional bug spray, backpack spray or all that, three or four times this summer, and it lasted anywhere from two hours to 12 hours, and they were back. The standing water thing is a big deal, there's also a submerged, probably goldfish pond in her backyard, about 10 feet off the fence, it's about knee-deep, you just got to trust me on that. The, at one point in time, they had a situation, and still do, with some feral cats that posted up in there and just kind of hung out, and I've got three kids, one of them is a 10-year-old girl, that sees a cat, and she goes to pet it. Well, the cat scratched her, and her, and bit Coleman, one of her friends, and scratched her, so I called Melissa, I got an immediate response then, but...
Does she live there?
Oh, no, no, sir, she lives in Forest Park. From what Mr. Hightower, across-street neighbor, said, she is not, no one's been in that house for at least 13 years or so. The, we haven't really had a situation like this, except for one time, maybe two years ago, over one of the long extended weekend holidays, the police were called because there were some kids, I think they live up the street, but there were some kids back there, they got caught smoking weed, and, you know, fun stuff on the holidays, and I've called them back there once or twice, just breaking stuff and whatever, and I just, you know, run them off, and it's just, it's tough. It never really got serious, I mean, the cat thing was kind of serious because it hurt my kid, but when the tree in the front of the house, when that limb fell, that's when it got real serious. It was probably 35 feet long, probably 10 to 12 inches in diameter, and fell across the street. Had to call the fire department, they came, sawed it up, moved it off. I mean, my kid, I mean, there are 15 kids on that street, they're walking up and down all the time, I mean, that's a hazard, I mean, and the tree's dead. I've texted her multiple times, shown her pictures, it's a squirrel house.
And is that tree still there?
Oh, yeah, it's still there. So we watched, me and my other neighbor and another neighbor, watched squirrels take little babies from the tree, the branch that fell, take them to another knot in another bigger limb that's above the street, go back in there, so it's a matter of time before it's, you know, all fall down, and it's a big oak tree. So that was my, that was my straw. So, anyway, that's, I mean, that's about it.
Great, very helpful, thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Will Stotler, I live at 304 West Glenwood, I live just across the street from the house that we're discussing. I'll echo a lot of what Brian said, the house is just kind of a nuisance, the kids will party in the basement, create a ruckus, the feral cat situation is a problem, the tree is really what, as Brian alluded to, kind of got us, was really the straw that broke camel's back. This big limb came about two inches from crushing my truck, it was a miracle that nobody was out on the street at the time that this happened, it was in broad daylight, and as he alluded to, the tree is dead. We've tried to communicate with her to try to, you know, fix things up. Our across-street neighbor, Mr. Hightower, has been doing the yard because it looks terrible, and he's doing it just as a service to the street, and has been doing it for years and years and years unpaid. Initially, he was asking for compensation, and she has not, would not pay, and so he just quit asking, and is just doing it out of the goodness of his heart to make the street look nice. It's a real problem. I have, my wife and I have offered to buy the house, cash funds from the owner, to try to get it off of her hands, so that we can, you know, refurbish it, sell it, rent it, make it not an eyesore for the street, and take care of all these problems, and she's refused. I think it's a problem for the City of Homewood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Barbara Burke, I live at 310 West Glenwood Drive, and I've lived there since Ms. Peters bought her property, and I can attest to what both Will and Brian have reported this evening, and it would be good if we could find a good solution. I think multiple neighbors have had a lot of forbearance with this issue over the years, and have reached out to Ms. Peters, and have, like Will, even offered buyers for the property and so forth. Thanks.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, I'd like to.
If you all have had communications with Ms. Peters, why is she reluctant, is there any indication of why she's reluctant to sell the property or to do anything about the property?
I personally have...
Or if you guys want to come forward, I think we'd all be curious to know that.
I've not reached out to her.
I'm sorry?
I personally have not reached out to her.
Okay.
I've talked with some of her colleagues who know her and they reportedly tried to talk to her.
Okay.
But I'm familiar with other neighbors who aren't here tonight who have reached out to her.
All right, thank you.
My wife's spoken with her and has some professional interaction with her and apparently in the context of talking with her and other colleagues, I guess, when she was living in the house, she was in a relationship with another person that ended tumultuously and I think any, anything to do with the property brings up bad feelings and so she has wanted to just shun away the property as a means to not have to deal with those feelings, is my understanding.
Do you have a number to get in touch with?
Yes.
Short answer to that.
All right, while you're, Scott, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I know that the feral cat situation came up several years ago and it was turned over to Animal Control and I went up there when I got the complaint and you could smell a lot of cat urine and all around the house. At the time, I think they're going in and out of the crawl space. The time I've been up there during this, I have not seen a cat or smelled that odor again, not to say that they're not there.
They're there.
Okay, they're there. If they're not there, there's plenty of other things around there.
Seven AM, walking back home, pretty much every, or back out to the property.
The tree is a huge tree. I mean, I'm thinking, what, a big round? It's a big tree.
It's probably three and a half feet wide.
Yeah, it's a big tree. It is, it is in a state of dying. It's not dead. Our ordinance pretty much addresses, you know, dead plant material or vegetation that we can take care of, so I'm kinda, kinda struggling on whether we can actually cut the tree down if we bring in an arborist to determine that it's a public nuisance and it's dead and dying. Is that something that we feel like we can address at the same time? Okay, all right.
Same thing with the house, is it unsafe?
That's what I was gonna ask.
That's the real deal here. Cutting the weeds is not gonna do anything.
Unlock, back door is unlocked. How do they lock the back? Oh, she said, well, somebody locked it. Probably last, sorry, probably year, two years, whatever, the back door was unlocked. Probably one of the kids who was smoking weed kicked the door in. So, what Will's saying about her state of mind is probably accurate because the inside of the house looks like someone just got up, went to work and never came back. It's one of the creepiest things you will ever look at.
No, no open windows or anything, vegetation growing into the house or?
Yes, there's vines growing up the side and-
Trees growing out of the gutters.
No obvious roof issues or anything like that?
No, no, there's a leak by the front door that's causing a little bit of a thing, but no, there's no structural issues that I've seen.
Well, so as part of the cleanup, Scott, I mean, we would clean up all the property. You could look from what you can, if there's access to it, you can, I assume, analyze the house in some way if there's some nuisance with regard to the structure itself.
Yeah.
And, and we can get an arborist to look at that tree and you can report back to us on that.
We need to report back, but he just says it's-
Okay. All the better.
The tree's got certain, probably about twenty percent of its limbs have green leaves on them now. The rest of them do not.
Okay. All right. We'll get some idea.
One of the big, the other big limb hanging over the street is also one of the ones that does not have any green on it.
Okay. All right, anyone else to speak in favor or against this? Okay, if not, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Scott, did you have anything further?
No, that's fine, thank you.
All right, counsel, I'll entertain comments, questions. Mr. Jones?
I would move that we declared a public nuisance under all the cited regulations that are in this item here in nineteen oh nine eighteen, so declare a public nuisance. In addition, that if our arborist determines that the tree is dead, that we also remove that and place a lien on the property for all expenses due to that. That would be my motion.
All right, you have a motion by Mr. Jones and a second by Mr. Wolverton.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so, new cleared on that property. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Next item, seventeen oh four eighteen, request to consider certain revisions to the business license ordinance and without objection, I'm gonna go ahead and send this item back to Finance Committee for some further discussion and work on seventeen oh four eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Next item, thirty oh five eighteen, request to consider revisions to fiscal policy, coming to us from Walter Jones and I believe we have a report from Finance.
Yes, sir. The Finance Committee met on October first. We voted five to zero to recommend these changes. We're amending the fiscal policy to treat the general fund transfer to debt service for bond payments, the same as the Board of Education's sales tax, which is to exclude that amount from the calculation in determining the rations. Also amend the fiscal policy to include available transfers from the general fund, sales tax fund and control account when performing the fiscal policy analysis. You made that motion, Mr. Wright, and it was seconded by Mrs. Smith, so five to zero coming out of Finance.
All right, so we have a favorable vote coming out of Finance. I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Andrus. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, I believe that's gonna be, I'm sorry, Mike, I skipped over, that's gonna be resolution one fifty on that one. I believe the previous one will be one forty-nine.
One forty-nine, correct.
Okay. All right, next item, twelve oh nine eighteen, which is a request for consideration for traffic control measures on Grand Avenue, coming from John Montgomery and Jennifer Andrus, and we will begin first with a report from Public Safety. Mr. McCluskey?
Thank you. Yes, the committee met and voted on October first, five to zero to recommend including Grand Avenue in the school zone area due to its closeness to the school, Shades of Harvard. And the motion was made by Counsel Wyatt, seconded by Counsel Tames.
All right, thank you, and I believe this is gonna require a reading.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Kendrick?
It's an ordinance to further regulate traffic on or along Grand Avenue within the city and to provide penalties for the violation thereof, whereas this council has previously adopted school zone speed limits not to exceed the sum of fifteen miles per hour for certain streets in and around Shades Cobble Elementary School, and whereas the council has determined there's a need to lower the speed limit for Grand Avenue to fifteen miles per hour pursuant to the Reduced Speed Zone Safety Act, be ordained by the city as follows. The council does, by the adoption, designate Grand Avenue as a municipal speed zone, school zone within the city, that every person, firm or corporation, shall not allow a motor vehicle travel on or along Grand Avenue in excess of fifteen miles per hour within the corporate limits of the city. Section three, the many part, any person found guilty of violation of this ordinance after its adoption shall be punished as provided by section one dash eight of the Code of Ordinances. Section four, the chief of police shall erect or cause to be erected school zone speed limit signs on or along Grand Avenue. Section five, the provision of this order shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. I'll entertain a motion for unanimous consent by Mr. McCluskey, seconded by Mr. Jones, and roll call vote. Robert. Mr. Gualtney? I'm sorry, let me get my, my roll sheet here. Mr. Tames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright? Yes, so we have unanimous consent and now I'll entertain a motion for adoption by Mr. McCluskey, seconded by Mr. Jones, and roll call vote again. Robert. Mr. Tames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright? Yes, so item twelve oh nine eighteen is approved. That's ordinance, I have twenty-seven fourteen.
Yes, sir.
And that ordinance is approved. All right, eighteen oh nine eighteen, request for consideration of a no parking zone along Twenty-sixth Avenue South between Eighteenth Street and Central Avenue, coming to us from Andy Gualtney, and another report from Public Safety. Mr. McCluskey?
Yes, the committee met on October first and voted four to zero to recommend a no parking ordinance on the south side of Twenty-sixth Avenue between Eighteenth Street and Central Avenue. The motion was made by Counsel Wyatt, seconded by Counsel Tames.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCluskey, and Mike, I think it's gonna involve another first reading?
Yes, it's an ordinance to further regulate traffic in the city on or along Twenty-sixth Avenue South between Eighteenth Street and Central Avenue in the city and to provide penalties for the violation thereof, be ordained by the city as follows. It should be unlawful for any person, firm or corporation to park or permit to be parked, any motor vehicle defined by the highway code, on or along the south side of Twenty-sixth Avenue South between Eighteenth Street and Central Avenue. Section two, the violation of this ordinance, person found guilty shall be punished as provided by section one dash eight of the Code of Ordinances. Section three, the chief of police is authorized and directed to install signs and markings to indicate that no parking signs is described in section one. Section, the next section, if any part of provisional order is declared to be unconstitutional or invalid after by court accomplished jurisdiction, all the parts remain in full force and effect. Section five, the provision of order shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council.
Thank you, Mike, and I'll entertain a motion for unanimous consent by Mr. McCluskey, seconded by Mrs. Smith, and roll call vote. Robert. Mr. Tames?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright? Yes, so we have unanimous consent for the second reading and I'll entertain a motion for adoption by Mr. McCluskey, seconded by Mrs. Smith, and another roll call vote. Robert, thank you. Mr. Tames?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright? Yes, and I believe that's gonna be ordinance twenty-seven fifteen is approved. Next item, sixteen oh nine eighteen, request to work in the right-of-way at ten twenty-four Salter Road to install a drainage channel and/or curb to connect with the city's curb, coming to us from Ken Kane, a homeowner, and Wyatt Pugh with BEZ. And we'll begin first with a report from special issues, I guess, and then we'll let Greg talk to us.
Yes. Okay, so the committee met last week, voted five to zero to refer this item back out to council without a recommendation. Mr. Higginbotham made the motion, Mr. Gualtney seconded it, and the reason we did that is because Mr. Cobb was gonna speak to the construction folks that were working next door to the property to see if they could come up with some grading that might help with the situation, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I did speak with Brian Platt, who's building the house next door. There's a berm or swell that's between the two properties that brings it down to the driveway right about the right-of-way where, in question, they had a draw on last week on that. Mr. Platt told me he's well aware of that and he's gonna tear his driveway out and replace it. And when he replaces it, he's gonna take care of that and channel the water to the street. We had a good discussion about it. That's gonna move on later in the plans, you don't want to tear the driveway out and then tear it up with construction equipment, but he is gonna replace the driveway and we'll resolve the issue at the same time.
Have you spoken to Mr. Kane to see if he's-
I've not.
Okay.
Really, Mr. Platt's paying for everything when he takes his driveway. He's gonna handle it all. There's really no point in putting a valley gutter in and out, it'd just be torn up.
Right. Would your suggestion, oh, wait, hold on, Mr. P.
Mr. Kane is actually here. Homeowner. Do you have anything you'd like to add, sir?
I'm here, I can answer anybody's questions.
If you would, sir, please come on up and we'll let you speak to the item.
Do I need to sign a hand?
That would be great, thank you. Just so we can keep an accurate record.
I haven't had a chance to speak with Mr. Cobb. Obviously, there's some bad erosion problems between our two properties. Something's gotta be done. I've lived there for about thirty years. It's gotten worse since the house building started, but the property inspector came out and said they could not tell whether the construction was causing it. At this point, we can all fight about what caused it later, I just wanna fix it. But I don't have really any idea what Mr. Platt is planning to do. I don't know what tearing out a driveway means, so I don't know how to proceed because I can't, I don't have any idea what Mr. Platt's gonna do nor whether or not it will either make this project unnecessary or whether we need to hold this in abeyance until, I don't know how to proceed.
I would guess, after hearing from Mr. Cobb, and Mr. Cobb, you can tell me if I'm right here, do you think, since he's not planning on doing the driveway right away, he's gotta wait until they finish the project before they can do the driveway because they don't wanna, like you said, tear up the driveway with all the, the new driveway with all the construction equipment going up and down. Should we just carry this over to make sure that once the driveway is torn out and replaced and he puts the channel gutter in, that that eliminates the problem and then we can drop it?
I think that'd be wise and I'll meet with them out on site. If I can meet with the both of y'all out there, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
And I think it's gonna be resolved pretty easily.
Yeah.
But the best way to do it is for-
That way, that prevents you from spending unnecessary money to do something.
The three of us, I'll meet with you and Mr. Platt both on site. We'll set a time that we can all meet out there together and we'll take care of it.
Okay.
And Greg?
Sir?
Did the homeowner give you an idea of when he's planning to do this work? Is it like imminent, happening right now?
No, it's not happening right now because you just tear the driveway back up again with your construction equipment, but he told me he's already done something to reduce the water flow over there with the retaining wall he's got. So, we just need to meet on site-
Okay.
-and not talk about him or them. Let's just all meet together on site and put it to bed.
All right, so, Mr. Kane, we'll keep this an item on the agenda and so it'll still be here before the city council and we'll wait for a follow-up report from Greg on it.
We'll get that done post haste.
Okay.
There is a drainage ditch that's there, a natural drainage ditch, which I maintain and clean out every year. And that ditch can't move, so that would be my concern to make sure, whatever they do, because I've still got that drainage ditch and I've still got water coming off that hill. We have to do something separately, but that will leave us.
All right, well, let's carry this over right now. Let's let you guys talk about it and report back and we'll see where we go from there. All right, so without objection, we'll carry over sixteen oh nine eighteen. Okay, that gets us to our committee referral agenda, which has been amended, and I will entertain a motion to approve the amended committee referral agenda.
Just a point of order, real quick, Mr. Wright, my item ten ten eighteen going to P and D, that was, that's being, these are changes that have been approved by the planning commission and being referred to council.
Okay, but you still wanted to go to-
Yes.
P and D, okay, great, so it's still on the committee referral. All right.
And move to approve.
Move to approve by Mr. Tame, seconded by Mr. McCluskey. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, the committee referral agenda is approved as amended. Next item into other new business, oh six ten eighteen, which is a request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of September twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen through October seventh, two thousand eighteen, and Mr. Jones, you have the honors, I understand.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. President, pro temp. Always wanted to say that.
Yeah, I really want you to salute when you do that, sir, please.
Yes, sir. I reviewed the vouchers, there were several questions. There sure were a lot of invoices, it seemed like everybody waits till the last run of the year. But anyway, right, Mr. Burgett answered all my questions, so I would move for approval of the vouchers for September 24th through October 7th.
All right, motion for approval by Mr. Jones, seconded by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that stands, and I guess that is...
Resolution.
Resolution 151, Mike.
Yes, sir.
All right. And next item, 0810-18, request for consideration of an ABC Restaurant Retail Liquor License for Margarunas Cantina LLC, doing business as Margarunas Cantina, located at 230 State Farm Parkway, coming to us from Mr. Burgett, our city clerk. And where are we on letters and...
We've received the letters from the Fire Department of no objection, and also the letter from the Police Department.
Okay. All right, any further questions or entertain a motion?
I'll move to us having no objection to the issuance of the license.
From, motion for approval from Mr. McCluskey.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Higginbotham. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that'll be, that stands as approved for the liquor license. All right, we have a couple of other items, actually, one other item, 1110-18, which is the Magic City Connector Route Proposal, coming to us tonight from Mr. Thames. And Brett, I'll just let you give us an explanation of what this one's for.
And I apologize, this came to new business without going through committee, but they had asked to hear from us by this Friday. And I mentioned this route in my email to the Finance Committee, kind of recapping where we are with the Transit Authority. This will be a route that would run 18th Street to 20th Street, so from downtown Homewood to Topgolf, with a stop at the intermodal facility. It'll run 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM with 15-minute headways, and 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM with 30-minute headways, Monday through Friday, and on Saturdays, all day with 30-minute headways. This just is a option that kinda came out in our discussions. It looks like a pretty good, pretty good route to try. It's gonna provide all sorts of connectivity between downtown Homewood and Birmingham. There'll be four stops in Homewood along 18th Street. This will also facilitate people getting to the intermodal facility. Maybe we're doing that previously on the 39 route, which picked up down here, which is proposed to go away. So it's gonna help those people. And in turn, they can leave the intermodal facility and still access our Walmart on the new number three line. So it's sort of integral to the discussions we've been having, which have been very productive, by the way. And basically, all they were asking for was just a motion of support from the city so that we can get us on the committee agenda upcoming. The cost to the city would be $31,200 for basically a total budget amendment.
I apologize.
Which we do not have to do now, now that we pay them quarterly. But at some point over the course of the year, $32,927 for what we've already budgeted.
Okay, are you requesting the funding now? You're just requesting the approval?
No, we'll send that to Finance at a later date. We're just looking for a motion of support to get us on the committee agenda to approve the extension of this route.
All right, got you.
Is that your motion?
That is.
All right, so a motion to approve in principle the Magic City Connector Route for the city of Homewood by Mr. Thames, seconded by Mr. McCluskey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that item stands as approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thames, all right, that gets us to the end of our agenda. Mr. Mayor? No comments from Mr. Mayor? All right. I would go over to Mr. Gualtney, but he's not there tonight, so we'll begin with you, Mr. Thames.
Mr. Jones, Finance will be at 5:00?
Yes.
How long do you need?
I believe, I would say we only need about 15 minutes.
Okay. PND will be at 5:15, also for 15 minutes. And I guess, only announcement would just be that we have been having, Barry, Jennifer, and I have had some productive meetings with the Transit Authority staff. It's been nice, to say the least. What I'll do, I think maybe tonight, I'll send out an email just to update everybody on exactly what the proposed changes are, because I would imagine some folks may start getting phone calls and emails about it. So I'll just send a recap to everybody. But all told, we're maintaining our most important drops, we're adding Saturday service, where before there was none. We're adding access to the Highway 280 route, and saving the city about $100,000 in the process. So hopefully, it'll continue smooth sailing from here. But if there's any questions, please feel free to give me a call.
Great, thank you, Mr. Thames. Mr. Higginbotham?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wolverton?
Nothing.
All right. Mr. McCluskey?
Yes, so Brett, you only need 15 for PND? All right, so we'll do Public Safety at 5:30, and we'll do Public Works at 5:45. So you're not last.
Thank you for handling that for me.
Since I'm gonna handle that one for you as well. Sorry.
I will not be able to make it.
You have to go last.
Does Public Works just gonna be 15 minutes as well?
Well, Mr. Thames, how long is that MECA presentation gonna be? Do we know?
I don't, I have Greg left, but is there anything else on the agenda? If not, I'd just say 15 minutes.
Okay, I don't think there's anything else on there. I haven't looked at it.
Okay, so...
I just know that's, I know that's on there.
Yes.
Is that the only item that you can think of?
There may be one other item...
Here's a referral agenda from Becca Storm.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
He's talking about Public Works.
That's the only referral item, so everyone else is on your agenda to cover.
Yeah, there's another item on there, I can't remember what it is, but it's been carried over many times. And Jennifer, it seems like it's something for you, but I would think 15 minutes will more than cover.
Okay, so we'll do 15 minutes, and just, I wanna take a second and thank Counselor Smith, Andrus, and especially Mr. Thames, with all their hard work with the BJCTA on this stuff, and Brett's Chinese math that he did, not his wife.
And Amanda's.
That's right, that's right. Don't let him... But to finally, I mean, it's been, I know it's been longer for Walter, but it's been, you know, a decade of issues since I've been on this council, dealing with them, and it seems like they've finally got some people that are reasonable and willing to work, and work with us, and the hard work that you guys have put in, and the benefit that it's bringing to the city at less cost is just short of a miracle. So, thank you all for taking care of that.
That's Mr. Cobb.
Yeah. Mr. Jones?
Happy Columbus Day. And, yeah, I wanna echo that, because I know it is difficult working with BJCTA, and talking to the constituent about it, it was interesting today to relive all that excitement. And then also, Mr. Higginbotham, we're thinking about you this week with the loss in your family and having to be mobile this week, thinking about you. And I believe, I believe that's all I have tonight, nothing further.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Mrs. Smith?
All right, well, I will be taking up the caboose position here on Monday, so I guess I'll go at 6:00.
Let me know how it feels.
Yeah, I will. I'll get back to you on that. The football team is still doing great, they won their homecoming game convincingly, and then had a really hard fought game against Minor this past Friday night. The coach of Minor used to be in Homewood, his son was the quarterback for, his stepson was the quarterback for Hoover High School last year. So it was, I saw lots of pictures with his former players from Homewood, with Adrian. So it was a good, it was a good win, they really worked hard for it. And just to point out, there's nobody here, but the BJCTA is having a public hearing tomorrow at 9:00 AM about the proposed route changes. So I'm gonna be here, and I may be the only one here, but I'm gonna be here to see if anyone shows up to talk about it.
Is the public hearing here?
It's in the, is it in here? It's in here. It's in here.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Smith. Ms. Andrus?
I will start, I'll pick up the sports wrap-ups and move on to cross-country. I'll start with the middle school, where last week, at Oak Mountain, the boys and girls came in first place. The boys are currently undefeated for two years, two solid years, so we have a dynasty moving. And then last week was Jesse Owens, and middle school boys won, middle school girls came in third. High school, our own Will Stone, came in third overall, and Laney Phelps came in fourth or fifth, I'm not sure. And so, anyway, really strong teams, and we're proud of them. They were supposed to go to Tallahassee, and it got canceled because of the hurricane. So we're not sure where they're headed this week, and they may be going to Atlanta. I want to give you an update on September 29th. We had a fundraiser for the bridge, and we had hundreds of people that came. We had Steve Ammons from the Jefferson County Commission, Darrell O'Quinn from the Birmingham City Council, incoming state Senator Dan Roberts, my co-counselor Peter Wright was there, Mr. Thames sent his business, and Mr. Gualtney donated some beer, we were very appreciative of the door prizes. Let's see, I'm missing somebody. David Faulkner was there, Representative David Faulkner, and I feel like I'm missing someone, Judge Jim Huey was there. So we had a really nice array of elected officials, and Sydney asked me how much money we raised right afterwards, and I told her 4,100, and after that, we had a donation of $750 come in. So we were right at 4,800, which, my goal was 5,000, we're still selling some shirts, and we sold a couple hundred shirts, and we have a match coming from the Birmingham Track Club and from the Track Shack. So it's gonna be a $15,000 endeavor altogether, so...
Wonderful, wonderful.
There you go. That's my update.
Thank you, Ms. Andrus. Mr. Wolverton, do you have something?
Yeah, I did forget one thing that I really wanted to thank Berkeley and Streets for addressing an issue that we've now dropped for the Lake Shore Trail. I've heard a lot of positive feedback from people that frequent it, whether they're runners, joggers, bikers, everybody appreciates that just a little bit of asphalt goes a long